Go on, okay. I'll call this meeting to order. All members are present and again, we are following remote meeting guidelines here that we've been doing for the last three sessions of our meetings. So, let's stand and do the pledge of allegiance. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve, by Lynn. Second, Sunny.
Motion by Lynn, second by Sunny. All those in favor, please say aye. Get roll call vote under this situation. Lynn?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Kara?
Aye.
Sunny?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Jason? Aye. Agenda is approved. Uh, so, let's see. Uh, any comments and questions from visitors? Again, uh, we... The phone number, Brad? Do you have the phone number?
You bet. The phone number to call in is 320-685-4901. Once again, 320-685-4901. And we'll just take a short breather to see if anybody can call in.
Yeah, so we'll wait 30 seconds here. Okay, so, no calls and there is nobody at the school, Brad?
Um, in the crowd tonight is Mr. Nate Getter.
Okay.
And he will, I'm sure he is here to hear his contract be approved for the following year.
Okay. Uh, so, moving on to the consent agenda. Anything that people want to pull from the consent for approval to pass the consent agenda? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. This is Lynn.
Second, Kara.
Motion by Lynn, second by Kara. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Lynn?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Kara?
Aye.
Sunny?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Jason? Aye. Is Shannon's video popping up? Because it didn't pop up when he said aye. I don't know.
I, I got it on, aye.
There we are.
Yeah!
Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, discussion, uh, the strategic plan update.
So, the strategic plan update is this. First of all, I just wanted to reach out to the students, staff, and community that responded to our written survey. That's greatly appreciated. We did get those surveys results back from Bruce Miles. In our last board meeting, we talked about whether or not we want to do it virtually. It really didn't get, it got a lukewarm response. And so, I called Bruce the next day and said, "You know, it just doesn't feel like this would be a really good process if we do this virtually." He goes, "Not a problem. Once, once, um, once we're ready, he's ready." So, he's done all the legwork. It just needs to get to this point where we can actually be face to face and so he can run his exercises. We do have a good framework in place for the 20, you know, the 2020 vision. And we do have those results. So, we can move forward with some of our goal planning, at least for the initial goals for the next year, and then work on that strategic plan when the time is right. Any questions or thoughts?
I just have one. With Mark Jensen leaving, I'm just wondering if you could have Bruce maybe connect with him about some of the discussion that might be happening. I don't know if we're going to be guaranteed that he will be here when that happens. And so, maybe we wait until the end of May, you know, for that to happen in case it does, so he's not double doing stuff. Uh, but, but I'd like to at least get some input from Mark before he leaves us.
Okay.
Is there anybody else that's leaving us that would want to maybe touch base with in this process?
Um, I'll think about that, Jason.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, moving on to discussion item B, COVID-19 update.
Yeah, so, as you know, things change daily with COVID-19. And, uh, that started last Thursday when the governor extended the distance learning for, for all schools in Minnesota to the end of the school year. And with that direction also came the, um, of no instruction as for May 1st and May 4th. So, this Friday and next Monday, students will not have instruction on Monday, on Friday and Monday. Staff right now are planning to come in and prepare their rooms for the end of the year to begin, um, summer cleaning. But again, because things change daily, we'll wait and see if we have, if we can do that or not. So, that was, that was Thursday that I sent that message out to families, which included, of course, the message that our activities, our, um, all activities from fine arts to academics to our athletics have all been also canceled for the season. So, has a tough message to send out Thursday and Friday. Friday morning, the emergency planning team met right away and we began discussing how we would try to finish our school year. So, that planning took place. And then Friday, uh, Friday afternoon, I sent out another message to our families just about what, where we were taught, what things we were talking about. First and foremost, we want to make sure that we continue to build connections and relationships with our students through this time. We are going to continue work doing food delivery, childcare, and technology support. We want to make sure that our teachers are providing meaningful lessons and that we also are putting as much support as possible through our paraprofessionals as well. You know, I did make this statement that nothing traditional is going to happen from here to the end of the year, and that is really sad. Um, we're not going to have the traditional kindergarten graduation. We're not going to have the traditional spring field trips, those traditional spring concerts that all of our families enjoy and community enjoy coming to. You know, right now, prom is not going to happen. And, you know, for some people, behind the wheel is now an issue, you know? So, all of these things are really disappointing and we're doing our best we can to make sure that we're giving our students the best we can as the year ends. One of the, um, one of the things that, topics that's really, um, kind of hit the pavement here is graduation. I just want people to know that we are working on multiple plans for graduation. Just know, we want to make sure that our students who have, who have given their 12, 13 years of education to us are sent off properly. And, uh, we're going to work on multiple ways to do that. Uh, we have to have multiple plans. You know, things change on a daily basis. What will the guidance and, uh, distance, social distance guidance look like? What will happen if we have bad weather? Where can we have it? You know, all of those things are coming into play and so we're going to make sure that we put kids first at the center of our decisions when it comes to graduation. Any questions about that?
Hey Brad, I have a question regarding, you know, the canceling of all activities.
Yeah.
What about, um, what about the, you know, if there are any cost savings when it comes to bus scheduling for all of those away games, tournaments that were maybe section tournaments that maybe we don't always qualify for, um, any other costs that we potentially aren't using this year? I think it would be wise for us to make sure we're at least keeping track of that because we may be asked what we're doing or how we're repositioning that money. So, I would make sure that we are doing our due diligence and, you know, here's what we saved when it came to busing for those activities. You know, uh, you know, equipment needs and, and other activity budget dollars that, again, were not spent, doesn't mean we aren't going to maybe shift it and spend it somewhere else. I don't know that anybody's going to challenge if it needs to be used somewhere else, but somebody probably will ask us, "Where did it go?"
Sure.
Or, "Did we save anything?" I guess, then my second question is, how, how is that working with the bus companies? I mean, obviously, we're paying them for not busing right now to some degree. What about all those extracurricular activities?
Beth, you can jump in here, but my understanding is that we are getting a fuel break because the price of fuel has gone down so much. And that was built into the contract. Um, we are paying for our bus contractors so they can pay their drivers. As far as the extracurriculars, we are not paying for those. Beth, I'll have you confirm that.
Yep, that's right. So, with our, uh, the normal rate that we have negotiated with our bus contractors, we're doing that and then we're getting an 8% credit because they're not using fuel at all right now, obviously. Um, they are still providing services for us though. They help us with our food service runs and they do, uh, run every day for our childcare as well. And yep, all of the extracurricular transportation is obviously not going on right now and that, and because that's not a guarantee with them, um, that's why we're not paying that piece of it. I was going to, uh, comment on your, your questions about activities as well, Shannon. What we are saving as far as, um, like transportation and other fees for activities not going, we're losing much more in, um, student activity fees. So, all those fees that students would have paid, we're losing and those are, that loss of revenue, um, would be bigger than what we're actually losing in expenses because we're still paying our nine, our 912 coaches to provide services for kids. So, we're still paying for a majority of coaches while we're not taking in any fees or any other revenue.
Yeah, I don't think that that was ultimately what I was getting at. It was making sure that we, we were able to identify what we didn't spend in busing fees and make sure we understand that that money was used, like you said, to cover activity fees that we're not getting, to cover payment of coaches and, you know, things that we still have to pay. So, we can't just say it's a wash or, you know, we know how many out, we know how many buses we're supposed to run for away games, for away tournaments. My guess is we can have somewhat of a dollar amount that was, you know, reallocated and not spent on that to somewhere else. And, and again, it's only because someone's going to say, "Well, you know, where did that money go?" And, and your answer was right on, but we might need to know, at least to some degree, what that dollar amount is.
Sure.
Uh, yep, I have, I've been tracking it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or around COVID-19 update? Jennifer, do you want to repeat that question one more time?
Are there any other services, um, at school that are not being used that are involved with COVID-19? For example, like the copier machines on that?
Oh, yeah, that's a good question. So, are we getting a break on our copier machines because they're not being used?
For example?
Yeah, for example.
Um, yeah, so there are small things like that. Probably the biggest savings we're seeing right now is in utilities because we've got empty buildings and they run differently when they're empty versus when we've got people in there. So, that's where I've seen the biggest cost savings. Um, smaller things like copiers or other contracts have been pretty, pretty minimal.
Okay.
Uh, that was an interesting topic of discussion today with our area superintendents around COVID-19 is, you know, we did have a milder winter. We had less snow. We, you know, so we don't have some of those expenses that we've had in the last few years. And a lot of, uh, which kind of leads us into the next topic of discussion is, a lot of us are seeing negative in the community ed programs. And, um, in my conversation with our, with the area superintendents today, um, almost all of them are doing similar to what, what I have recommended to us is that we continue to pay our community ed people through June 30th, um, as we are doing all of our other employees. And those savings that we are seeing through this, um, be allocated to that. So, we're all doing the same thing, are all general funds, are all going to fund our losses in community ed, um, and, um, and then track those losses. And then, those, those losses then will be talked to, um, our legislators, both at the state and federal level, on how we can help recover some of those Fund IV issues.
I just want to clarify too, for community ed, when you say that, that it's mostly our ECFE and our school readiness programming. So, it's the teachers and, and paras that provide instruction to kids. Those are the costs that we'll be covering with the general fund at the end of this.
Does that make sense to you as board members?
So, that, so I assume that means for like, community ed instruction, those instructors, since the classes aren't running, they're not getting compensated just as it would occur normally?
Yeah, any, anything that's got a, um, fee base that would be based on participation and like, I'm like, classes would have been canceled, those instructors, instructors are not being paid. It's just our teachers and, and paras and that are under contract with us that we're continuing to pay.
How does this affect kid care?
Right now, we're not charging any fees, um, for kid care or for Spartan Spot. Um, starting when, when school ends and starting with June 1st, we, I think we'll be looking at that again as being something that we'll charge for. I think when the governor asked us to provide that service, he was thinking we would be utilizing, um, staff that we already have for the school day. So, the summer is a different story, I guess you want to say. So, right now, we're not charging anything. We're not taking in any, any fees for any childcare.
Any other questions around, uh, COVID-19 and, um, then how that segued into our community education, uh, program update? Finally, on COVID-19, I do want to make sure that, that the board and the community knows that I did send out a message to our, um, families today that we did have a positive test. We are being, we are showing an abundance of caution by closing our childcare for this week and, uh, taking guidance from the Department of Health and Stearns County Public Health on how to, um, communicate with our families who are both at low risk and high risk for, uh, exposure to, um, COVID-19. So, um, those families have been communicated with as well as our staff have been communicated with. And if anybody would have further questions, the, the person to reach out to is me and I would answer any of those questions. So, you can email me or call me and we, I'll do my best to answer those questions or point you in the right direction for the resources that you need as a parent or as a community member.
Brad?
Yes, yes.
I'm wondering if you have any, yeah, any, uh, information as far as from the state level? Cause you alluded to some Fund IV potential, any more discussion or knowledge as far as assistance from the state for some of those issues?
I, I have not been able to speak directly with Lisa or Jeff yet. Things got a little hairy on, uh, Friday and then of course today, so I've not had a chance to reach out to them, but I am, that's on my to-do list. So...
Any other questions? Okay, then moving on, uh, to the action item, uh, letter A, future planning.
So, um, in front, and then I don't know, did Carrie jump on yet? Carrie Johnson? Carrie, are you there? I see, I see you.
Yep, I'm here.
Hi, Carrie. So, our, under letter A, we have the curriculum and instruction PowerPoint that Carrie provided for, for you. Carrie, do you just want to talk a little bit about what's on that PowerPoint?
Yeah, thank you for letting me join your meeting tonight. Um, yeah, I sent out the PowerPoint. I was really lucky this year to, um, start off with a wonderful group of different content areas. I got to know them really well and worked closely with them before all of this kind of changed rapidly. Um, so as you can see, as you look at the PowerPoint, you can see how it is broken up into the different content areas. They spent, um, let's say August through March, working together as a team, um, primary and secondary, so across the district, to find their wants and needs and did a lot of research and aligned their standards with what they needed and came up with their list. So, you can see what, they got everything that they wanted on their wish list. Um, underneath you see technology. There was quite a few technology requests that we passed on to Brian and he's working with them to get those needs met, to help, um, enhance some of the curriculum areas. So, in the end, if you look at, we were pretty excited, um, being, trying to get them everything they wanted, which we did. Um, we were being very, um, physically responsible. We, it was over a hundred and some thousand dollars that came back in, um, vendors bids on different curriculum. And with Kayla's help, um, she and I worked really hard for a couple months to get it down to the 82,000. So, we did a lot of hard work and we were very proud of that and also very happy that the educators are getting what they need to help their students. And we're just planning for next group. We have a meeting, um, next week with our next group, starting with special ed and intervention to get them going and starting in that direction this summer already.
Carrie, for the community, will you tell us what, um, curriculum areas are being, are, are getting the, uh, curriculum they need for next year?
Yes, absolutely. So, we have, it's all the specialist areas. So, we have FIED, health, visual arts, music, and media.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And who's up for next year again for the community?
Next year, we have special education, interventions, um, FACS, business, EL, and , um, ALC also. So, a large group, but a very diverse group, so that should be exciting too.
Great. Any questions, uh, board? So, again, due to, due to COVID-19, we typically, or we started last year of having our teaching and learning. We would have had a, we had a nice exhibit. People could have come in and saw the, saw the, um, curriculum. We'd have had that prior to the board meeting with the teaching and learning committee and, um, we'd have been able to have that then approved for tonight and then gone through with our purchases. And so, you know, unfortunately, people aren't going to be able to see that as well as we'd like to have presented it, but, um, I'm really confident, uh, in, um, the work that Carrie and Kayla and the curriculum teams have done to get to this point. And again, it's always nice to be able to say that we are, um, getting what the students need for the next year's curriculum and then also being able to still prepare for the future bigger purchases that we get in math and, uh, language arts typically. Beth, any final comments on that? Nope? Okay.
I just had a question, Carrie, a quick question. Uh, I thought I had seen in the minutes that you were reviewing some social emotional learning curriculum. Can you maybe give an update on that and what happened? Where was that at?
Great question. Yeah, right in the midst of all of this happening, I've been working with two companies on the social emotional and lucky for us, right now, they are giving, um, it's almost like a free pilot right now with, um, full access to everything because they're, we're using it online right now. Um, so, um, we're very excited about that and we're looking to incorporate that into next year's with the, and have that fall under with interventions. So, that is something that we have taken a look at and talked about.
And those seven mindsets and...
Move This World.
Move This World.
Yep. And they're both fantastic. So, I'm really excited to get feedback from the staff to hear the pros and cons of both.
Yeah, I had been to a presentation at the annual meeting about Move This World product and I was pretty impressed with, you know, just, they had a school that had done a presentation on the impact, you know, on their students and, um, you know, some of the unsolicited stuff on how it impacted their, you know, athletic performances and stuff and how they use those concepts to sort of apply to real life situations. It was pretty, pretty cool, so...
They are very impressive.
Yeah. It's great that you're able to test it out and see what, you know, what's working for people and that gets feedback that way. So, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So, uh, with that discussion, we'll, we will, um, instruct Kayla and Carrie to get, get moving on those purchases.
Do we need to make a motion to approve that or not? Or just... Brad?
I, sorry, Jason. Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah.
I believe we should have a motion to approve that. The board is approving, um, curriculum and instruction.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll be, this is Sunny.
Okay.
All second, this is Jennifer.
Motion by Sunny, uh, second by Jennifer. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Lynn?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Kara?
Aye.
Sunny?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Jason, aye. Okay, motion to, uh, get the next year's curriculum is approved.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Carrie.
Okay, action item B, new positions for the next school year. Brad?
Yep, so in front of you, you see the slate of new positions. Twenty twenty-one school year, um, the technology assistant, the, um, English, science, social studies combination, um, the first grade teacher and the paraprofessional. Those are the positions in front of you for, um, approval for next year. And that is based on our enrollment, uh, projections and numbers. And I would reckon, I will entertain any questions and then recommend that we approve those for next year.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the positions. This is Lynn.
Motion by Lynn.
Second by Shannon.
Second by Shannon. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Lynn?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Kara? Kara?
Kara, we need you to turn your mic off. Mute.
We'll move on, Sunny?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Jason, aye.
Kara.
Kara?
Aye. I'm having some significant, uh, technical difficulties with my internet.
Okay, we got you now though. Thanks, Kara.
Okay, uh, motion to approve position passes. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, item C, buildings and ground radon report.
Hey, Jason, before we move from there, sorry. Brad, has there been any discussion on what or how you're going to, um, post the assistant principal job? Is that something you and Nate have talked about or...
Right, so, with Nate's acceptance of hire tonight, that kicks the mo, kicks the, um, in motion of the, a need for the assistant principal starting tomorrow. And so, Nate and I will sit down and make sure we have, um, the, all the proper processes for what the job description should look like, what the minimum requirements, all those things that'll all be in place. And then we'll begin a posting period, uh, of generally two weeks. We'll put together a committee, a hiring committee, and we'll get after it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the question, Shannon. So on the radar testing, um, so we are required to do this radon testing. Um, when we initially had the testing, um, we had a couple of areas that came back high, uh, which happens. And so then we had to go back through and retest those areas. Those retested areas came back within the normal limits, um, and Brent, uh, put that report in. So that report is there. And so now we have to have this full, um, report approved by you as the board, and then that is then communicated out, um, via our website. So I just need a motion to approve the report as submitted.
This is Sunny, I'll make a motion to approve.
Shannon, I'll second.
Motion by Sunny, second by Shannon. Any further discussion? Uh, I just have one question. I know that, uh, they're talking about, you know, some potential air quality improvement stuff in the high school eventually. Is that something that can be considered, you know, for some of those areas if they are in that part of the building for that, that work or not?
So are, you mean in our LTFM plan, Jason?
Yeah.
Um, actually, one of the areas that tested higher was actually in the district office, um, but I will, I will look into that as an opportunity.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, any other questions? Okay, uh, all those in favor, Lynn?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Kara?
Aye.
Sunny?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Jason, aye. Uh, motion is approved for the radon report. Okay, uh, next item is superintendent report.
Yeah, I have two, two, um, two topics. Um, one is, um, the month report on enrollment. You saw just a few students lower than what we had the month before. I had Holly dig into those. Uh, these are students who just left us. Um, I, I want you all to make, to know that, that we did not have students, um, who are leaving us because of fifteen day, um, not checking in attendance issue.
Attention issue.
That, that is not, some, I need to have somebody mute their mic. Okay. Um, so those are not attendance issues, uh, they're just actual store students have just left us. We also did get a few more students, um, just prior to our closing, so, um, there won't be a real significance as far as aid is concerned. There's only a minor percentage of aid that's lost based off the last, you know, twenty to thirty days of school, so, um, not, not overly concerned about, you know, reduction of between five and six students. Questions on that? Okay. Um, the next is, um, legislative and we're watching closely. Uh, the governor, uh, again, today talked about summer school potentials and what types of actions could be taken there. Um, we need to watch that very closely, um, especially if that is going to be a distance learning type situation with summer school. I've had some families reach out to us and say, you know, summer, this distance learning for regular school, we can manage, not sure we can manage summer school on that situation as well. So we'll, uh, we'll be watching those, those closely. And as I said to Jason, as Jason asked earlier, I will be in communication with, um, Senator Howe and Representative, um, uh, Damuth about how we can help fund for, and as well as overall, just the expense of schools are seeing with COVID-19, so. Those are my two items to report on.
All right, um, then we have, uh, committee reports. Uh, let's see here. Uh, Jennifer?
Yeah, I have a couple of committee reports. Um, so last week, the community ed advisory council met, um, the individuals that attended that was myself, Amy Hunter, Matt, Becky, Brittany, and, um, Stephanie. Um, and we talked about the governor mandate with the childcare, how everybody's, uh, the form meeting tonight, um, and then early childhood update with the registration number, all of the books from, and obviously, um, there's just a lot of unknowns at this time, but how would COVID affect that?
Hey Jennifer?
Yeah?
When you have your head turned to the right, it sounds better than when you're looking straight ahead, so.
Oh, okay, so maybe my microphone's over here, is that better?
Perfect.
Yep. Okay, I'll yell over here then. Um, and the programming update, um, so for summer plans, uh, creativity is going to be key as far as offering courses that, you know, first of all, are socially acceptable and safe, and then secondly, things that folks would be interested, uh, as far as community ed goes. Um, one of the things we talked about was potentially collaborating with some of our, uh, other districts, um, to offer some online classes, uh, music lesson classes, um, watershed district was discussed. There was a few sort of ideas that we were throwing out, but again, many unknowns there as well. And then, um, we also came up with a list of expanding the participation in this advisory group, uh, and just came up with a list of, you know, folks that are, whether they're local businesses or, um, places of worship or leaders in the community, people that, uh, Stephanie's going to be reaching out to, ask if they'd be interested in, in just providing feed, feedback and being on the committee as far as what in the community folks might be interested in seeing from community ed going forward. Um, all other, um, updates is, uh, met with technology committee, uh, not the whole committee, but a subcommittee, the one on one-to-one initiative. Uh, both topics of discussion were, um, potentially implementing a learning management system. Um, this, uh, system would integrate with Teams, it would integrate with Skyward. The goals would be, it'd be providing, uh, it'd have a parent portal, which would provide increased visibility to parents. Um, and then there's an ARP, having modifying assignments is quite a bit easier, um, than, than just using Teams. Um, so there, uh, a survey is going to go out to the teachers to sort of evaluate their interest and, uh, in moving forward with potentially adding a learning management system. Um, we also looked at, uh, the policy on the one-to-one initiative, you know, certainly there's going to be policies and fees about how that's all going to work, um, and there's a draft in play. So we reviewed that, that's going to go through administration before it comes back to the board. And then we also talked about, um, potentially adding, uh, positions, um, at each of the buildings, which would be existing teachers with added responsibility of being tech, calling it, uh, tech experts. Um, so we talked about that at quite some length of what that job description would look like and sort of what value, um, those individuals would provide as we start, um, expanding the number of devices in all of the buildings over the course of, you know, the next two years. So that's what I got. Any questions?
The committees that I report on have not met.
The committees I refer on have not met either.
Shannon, unmute your mic.
Sorry, sorry.
It's okay.
We, uh, we spent the majority of the first part of the meeting talking with, uh, the natural gas company about running their line through our property, uh, where that was going to be. It's pretty innovative. They're going through their initial studies, uh, to determine where it's going to be and, you know, basically in a nutshell, they'll offer us, you know, the typical going rate, which, um, maybe Sunny or Brad can remember, it's some sort of formula that's two-hundred times something to come up with a cost, which they're going to eventually give to us. Um, it would be basically entering our property over on the west, north side of Field Two, which is by the cemetery, and then it would run through the Fox property and then it would exit by the Alanon building through just a small piece of our property crossing the road. Um, and again, they're only in the initial stages. I think they've come to the conclusion that this is their best route. Uh, as far as fields and things that we potentially think we're going to do in that area, there wouldn't be any negative impact. It's, they use a four-foot, um, depth as their guideline. The state guideline's thirty-six inches, so they actually go deeper with their pipe. If we were to feel we were going to be building anything in those areas, it might be a different story, but I, I don't think that that's the case at this point. So, uh, right now, I would say, and what we gave them as a recommendation is, you know, move forward and, and give us your, your final, um, you know, dollar amount type offer on what that would look like for us. So again, if I'm missing anything on that, Sunny or Brad, anything to add to that northern gas line discussion?
Just want to add that the, the piece that we do currently own, that is now being and will be farmed, will still be allowed to be farmed under the, any, under the agreement. So when our FFA decides, gets to take that land over and starts planting their crops, that will not be interfered with as well.
Yeah, thanks, Brad. Any other questions on, on that piece? I believe it's at twenty-twenty-one. Is that? That's right, right?
Yeah, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, I believe it was.
Right, I was going to say the fall of twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah.
So we're ways out yet on, on them doing anything. Uh, we also just talked about, uh, normal schedule for, um, this summer when it comes to cleaning and, and just trying to do what we would normally do, uh, as well as making sure that, uh, we are on top of all of our projects upcoming for the summer. Not sure that, at this point, we know if it's going to affect any of the companies that we've hired or how COVID-19 is affecting any of them, but most of those are considered essential, so our feeling would be that all of that work this summer would go on, um, as normal. As far as using the outside fields and our buildings, uh, we talked about doing our part as a community and as we get instruction from our state, from our local government, if our outside space is something that can be available to the community through, uh, outdoor activities, we would do everything we could do to have that space available. Uh, so meaning, you know, we're going to keep it up, you know, we're going to cut the grass, we're going to take care of all those spaces. Uh, again, the, the guidelines that we get from the state and from the local government will dictate what we're able to do, but we all, again, agreed that we have to do everything we can do to make what space we have, because that might be all we have this summer when it comes to activities where people can, you know, be out in, outside and, and spread out as best as possible. So, again, Sunny and, and Brad, anything to add to that outdoor space and indoor space is obviously going to be dictated by what we're allowed to do as far as a, a space rental situation?
No, we're just not going to let our grounds turn into hayfields. We just, we want, we want to keep them up.
Right.
So, so that we can be nimble and start if we can start.
We also, you know, Brent made a good point, you know, we're not going to, you know, we, we can't police it. You know, obviously, we're not locking those fields up. You know, people have to use common sense and, you know, so there could be people using our fields and, and doing things throughout the next few months as the summer, you know, as the weather turns nice and, and maybe there's not community ed activities or organized activities. I think we all agree that it's not going to be our job to police that. I mean, that's going to be the job of our, of our civic leaders in town that, you know, want to help people to know what's right and wrong. That's kind of where we left it, from what I remember. Anything else to add to that, to that meeting?
Oops, that's good.
One last thing, the youth baseball.
Go ahead, sorry. I just had one thing to add.
Your turn.
I was just going to mention that there was some discussion about the pool box and that they are, um, they should be done by fall, was what my notes showed.
Yeah, no, thanks. And, and then the one piece I forgot is the youth baseball association. You know, we had a discussion about their contract that they had with the district, with the, uh, Field of Dreams project and where that was at. Uh, you know, it's, there's going to be some negotiating yet on what they're expecting out of the remainder of that contract, what we're able to really do. I think both parties, you know, want it to be positive and there's new leadership with that group. It, it's just changing of the guard from the old leadership of the youth group and the old leadership of our school and trying to figure out where the new leadership of our school and the new leadership of that group is going to go. So I, I feel like we'll get there. We, we just have to, you know, work through it. This COVID-19 hasn't helped that process for this summer, but I think over the next two years as that contract ends, we'll, we'll figure out how the two groups can work together.
Yep. Thanks, Shannon.
None of my committees have met.
And then me, uh, I remotely attended the Beth Stearns, uh, meeting and probably the big item was approval of expansion of the, uh, setting four program, which will be expanded to the, uh, Sartell, the old middle school site that they've renovated. So, uh, approximately with staffing, at least the cost is about, it's a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, but the expenses for that will all be, um, distributed based upon usage. So if we have students that need the program, then we'll pay part of that fee. If we don't have students, you know, so it, it was a very good compromise that all the superintendents had, uh, discussed and, and came to agreement that, uh, we, we approved at the board meeting. Um, I think we have right now forty-one students, uh, that is, that are on the waiting program, so there's definitely a need. They wanted to try and expand the program even more than what, uh, the initial approval was, but they are concerned that they're not going to be able to get the, the teachers needed to provide the, the services. So they're starting with a, sort of a middle-of-the-road projection as far as staff, so, but with the potential to increase if there, if there are more. Um, Brad, did you have anything else on that?
Yeah, just one clarification. It's not the middle school that's being used, it's the, it's the old elementary that's over, um, by the river. It used to be, it's where it currently, it's where the, currently the, um, administrative offices are for Sartell. And so we'll be renting four classrooms there for that. And, and Jason, you are right, there are forty-one kids in the six districts that are on a waiting list to get to this level four program, and we're going to be able to accommodate those kids. And that's what, that's the really important message here, is we're going to finally be able to accommodate those kids who really need that extra support.
I am here now.
Okay.
I lost my network for a second. So, uh, I think...
Jason, uh, before German and as you know, it's pretty light right now, um, with all of, with COVID-19 going on. Um, so just be watching for those, uh, uh, emails or those invites from us, uh, for those meetings that are able to happen.
Oh, yeah. Um, and then I think we only have one meeting in May.
Correct. What are you going to do with your extra Monday night, guys?
Stay home.
Stay home.
Uh, and one other thing that I forgot to update, I did send out the, uh, review for, uh, Mr. Calvington to, uh, the people that he reports to and so there's a deadline, I think of May 4th to get that information back, so then I'll try and get that to the board before the next meeting and then we'll send out, uh, survey for the board members to complete after getting that, that data, so. Any other questions, anything else?
No.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks, see ya.
You, good night.